I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the bridge, you can call your call.
Chair of the committee.
Here.
Senator Bishop.
Here.
Frank Stroud.
Here.
Janet Scott.
Here.
Here.
This is what was removed. Here. Um, Mitch from March seventh.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for March seventh to two thousand twenty-two.
Second, motion, second in discussion. Here none. Uh, do we need to roll call with John even more?
Just for ten.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion open as a licensing board? So move to a second.
Second.
Motion, second in discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Let me back up. Public address to the board. Uh, this is time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. Uh, if you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company institution you represent. Public address of the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. But sure that does mean we answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses them, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making this main available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure or participate in, please try to attend in person. Thank you. Anyone wishes to address the board? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, uh, motion open as licensing board. So move to your second. I motion, second in discussion. You're none. Open as a licensing board. We just started.
Uh, we received a complete application. For, uh, the, uh, the change of the alcohol license from Paddys, but also to where the holdings and, uh, doing business as Portavia and, uh, and, uh, so I recommend approving the transfer of all who are being ordered and, uh, paid up.
For motion?
Make a motion to the license over. From Paddys, um, LLC to Gravel Holdings Incorporated.
Second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, Mr. Boyle, who's mine? Great, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck on, uh, your business and, uh, looking forward to seeing you. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yes. Uh, George, I guess it'll depend on how we fast the great state of Massachusetts moves. It's paperwork, but, uh, we're hopeful for George.
Great.
Excellent. Just doing some nice changes inside. We'll start our reveal soon.
Fantastic. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you for coming up and talking.
Yeah. See, a motion to close this licenses. Your second, motion, second in discussion. You're none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Um, number seven, employment, appointment or applications, Mr. Anderson.
This, we have three employees, uh, with the recommendation of the, uh, highway superintendent. The first thing, Jonah Smith, has temporary highway labor effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two through September second, twenty-twenty-two, with recommendation of the highway superintendent.
Your motion?
I make a motion to appoint Jonah Smith as temporary highway laborer effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two through September second, twenty-twenty-two.
Second, discussion. Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Motion carries.
And second, we have, uh, similar motion, uh, for Owen Alfonso as a temporary highway laborer for the same dates, again, with the recommendation of the highway superintendent.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Owen Sanzo as temporary highway liverer effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two through September second, twenty-twenty-two.
Second, motion, second, all in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, I'm going to stay on that one.
Uh, next. Finally, we have, uh, an appointment of Brian Lavinio as transfer station attendant effective July first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Lavinio is the current transfer station attendant working for Casselen. He has, uh, very happily agreed to work for the town as we transfer the operation of the transfer station to the town. So we're very pleased to have him onboard. He's very knowledgeable about the operation of the transfer station. And this is, uh, we're appointing him early just to, uh, uh, make sure everyone is, is secured in the, uh, in the transition.
Great. So motion?
Make a motion to appoint Brian Lavinio as transfer station attendant effective July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, motion, second, any discussion? I, I just have to say Brian's doing great work up there. Had the chance to chat with him a little bit about the, uh, the transition he's, uh, looking forward to and excited. So, um, looking forward to that, that move. Uh, motion is second and any further discussion? You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, here none, motion carries. Great, thank you. Um, number eight, committee appointments or applications.
Um, as you know, we've been asking for, uh, uh, volunteers for committees and one of them has been the Waste Management and Recycling Committee. And, uh, I'm pleased to say our select board chair, Joseph Diver, has volunteered to, uh, take on that task among the other tasks he's taken on. So, um, that is who I have to present to you tonight.
Uh, Mr. Bishop, I'll eat. Do the motions.
I make a motion to appoint Joseph Diver to the Waste Management and Recycle Committee effective May tenth, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, motion, second, discussion. I'm going to stand from this. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was, was that the year you named, you named me, Mr., uh, Mr. Board, we need the waste by.
Can we have a clarification on that?
Yeah, Mr. Boyle, can we have a clarification when I hear your vote? Was it?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Um, motion carries. Thank you. Looking forward to that collaboration.
Be that.
With the committee. Uh, number nine, leverage support for the Mass.
Are you looking at this?
Uh, Mass One-Stop Grant?
Yes. Um, we have, uh, you know, uh, last, last year we had a, an application, uh,
Orbit.
For a one-stop grant, uh, from town. And we have another one this year, um, Faisal Ali and the Union Block is, uh, um, as you got in your packet on, uh, on Thursday, proposing
Yes.
A, uh, housing on the fourth floor of the Union Block, um, six one-bedroom apartments. And I will let, um, Mr. Ali speak for himself if he would like to at this point.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Um, Faisal Ali, Dalton Math, Ali Union Block, Main Street in Dalton. Uh, Linda and I, my wife and I purchased that building in two thousand and five, and, uh, we had overseen where cars to kind of make it into a modern kind of upscale office building because of the location, because of the, uh, we think the, uh, Dalton town is just like that is the center. It appeared to be the center of the town for us. Uh, when we took it over back then, I would say there was four commercial sites downstairs. On the second floor, there were three, uh, individual people with offices. And on the third floor, there was the ballet studio. Currently, we have done a pretty good job of getting the downstairs level completely full. Uh, when it becomes vacant, it gets full right away, which we are very pleased to see the people want to come and do business there. Uh, the second floor has generated some good interest and we're about ninety percent full on the second floor in terms of professional office space. The third floor is under good light. And for a lot of years, if we have progressed with this building, we have often, often wanted to put apartments on the third floor. We just make it a nice kind of, uh, sort of an urban look for the apartment and it's better utilized. So between professional offices and apartment living spaces and upscale living spaces and the commercial space, it kind of reminds us of a, of a city, of a city like that. Um, we have, we have, uh, done a lot of things to make that building sort of, uh, can remember, I'll tell you, back in two thousand and five, we had an old concrete for a heating system in there, a ten thousand gallon oil tank in the ground that took, uh, that took ten thousand gallons of oil. And if we were to put that in today, that would cost us about fifty-two thousand dollars. And we needed to fill it up quite a year. So, so you can think, you know, we have changed things like that and made it better and more efficient. I came across the one-stop and community grant. And I thought to my wife that this might be an opportunity for us to do what we have been talking about over the years. Um, I filled out the, uh, initial template and I received a response back very positive from them, giving me some recommendations on how I should approach it. Um, the, the, we, we put in for two different grants. One is for the development of six single-family, uh, apartments, single-room bedroom apartments. But we also put in for an elevator, thinking that having an elevator on that east side of our union block would enhance the, the, I think it would just bring people into that place more. Uh, I think it's difficult for elderly people, certainly for handicapped. We put in a collective chairman several years ago, but it's a pain in the butt. Uh, we need key, uh, people break it, they break the lever. We have repaired it more than you want to know. Uh, it would be wonderful if we could get an elevator in there. And I think it enhances and makes it, uh, a, a very proficient, professional, great office building. They recommended, I put this together as one proposal for state of Massachusetts. So hence, I am putting together, they had given me the okay to go forward. Uh, part of this going forward is securing money from the bank, which we have already done with Pittsfield Cooperative Bank and, uh, and putting together this grant and getting the support from the town manager, that's the select board, and the local politician. That's something we don't do very well. And, uh, but it works out very nicely. I met with Paul Marks and, uh, he and Adam Heim are fully supportive of it. Um, I will say to you that, um, if this does work, uh, it is a substantial cost. We estimate that would be looking at one point two million. But, um, but, uh, out of those six units up, up on top of the third floor, it will, will still have half of the third floor available. So we tend to kind of keep it with the people, some of the people that are there. Hopefully, it could perhaps, if this works out, and I'm thinking it would, that we would, uh, eventually move forward and even develop that, that other side. Uh, one of the things my wife and I have talked about was, uh, we talked about affordable housing for that third floor, but, but we decided not to. What we decided that we would do is perhaps two or three out of those six units, we would offer to the local town for the public purpose. So a police officer, a person who works at the town office, um, a nurse, a doctor, that, you know, there are just not enough housing in Dalton. And we hear that all the time. Uh, people constantly will call and say, you know, do you have an apartment? Do you have? I think we could, uh, make this fly. I think it would work. I think it would work well. I know we would do the best we can do, put the best foot forward and work locally with people, which we do all the time. And we hire local people. They do know.
That's great. Uh, any, any questions on the application at all?
I don't have, yeah, I have some comments also, if you don't mind.
Well, should we go through the motion first and then your comments? Okay. Um, is, have a motion?
I make a motion to write a letter of support for this grant for Faisal Ali and his wife.
Second, motion, second, any, any discussion?
I have a few comments. And, uh, first of all, I have no doubt in the Ali's, they're great, very, very family from the town of Dalton. I have no doubt in their abilities to make this happen also. I think it goes for the betterment of the town. I think it's a great, great idea. It, this is, for me, it's a no-brainer and I recommend everybody support this.
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I echo Mark's comments. And I think this is such a great thing for Dalton, which is really greatly needed. Thank you for undertaking this. This is awesome. Anything we can do on our end, you've got my full support.
Mr. Bishop?
Sure. Um, so the Mass One-Stop Grant, the proceeds of the grant will be used, uh, for the elevator, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that the main, main thing? Okay. And the existing tenants up there, what's the plan for, for them? The existing tenants?
What's the plan?
Well, the, the, the third floor, everybody's a tenant at will.
Yeah.
Um, what we would do, the ballet studio that is up there has been there since we purchased the building. Our intent would be to downsize that a little bit because it's mostly empty. But we can downsize that and still keep her, uh, doing the job.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about taking, uh, the, with Superior Gradder and moving them to the ground floor at some point. At some point, he can't get his supply up there and the elevator is certainly clogged.
Yeah.
The problem is having him up there with apartment is that he uses chemicals sometimes to, uh, to do the shirts and, and the odor is pretty strong. Well, Mark, Mark had been in a long time and he's getting retired. Uh, I'm not quite sure. That's just an option that we had. The other tenant, the third one, um, she just came onboard and this is something that she wanted to do so bad. I don't think she takes it, uh, I don't think it's a life or death thing. It's not something that she depends on. She, two nights a week, they have one day. So it's kind of that big space, and it is a huge space for, um, two nights a week or two hours a one day. I don't think she would, you know.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the response. More curiosity.
I would have a hard time with Mark from Superior Gradder because, uh, he's been very good to us. He does, we do business with, in fact, we try to do business with everybody in that, in that block. Um, uh, somehow, somewhat, we do business with him. Now, I have a funnel on coming downstairs. I will not do business with that. I can show you. But, you know, that maybe try harder to utilize everybody to help them out.
Maybe you and Bob could get it too for once.
Exactly. Yeah, I'll catch up with you, but, uh, yeah. Mr. Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Do you have a target, um, rent or a, a range of rents that you're considering at this point?
We have, we really have. Um, we, if I had to say, did we think about and did we have some discussions with it? The answer was yes, a single bedroom. And I'm aware that what's going on in some of the, uh, people in Pittsfield, charging anywhere from eleven hundred to twelve hundred, eighty-seven or thirteen hundred. Um, I'm thinking we could probably do well between nine hundred and a thousand. One of the things we have always done has worked with our tenants. We have many of them and they are long-term, just like our employee. We try to keep everybody long-term. We will sacrifice the higher amount to keep people, to keep it stable, to keep it clean, and have good relationship. Uh, that's very important. It, we, at least it's a lot of maintenance on our part. And we have maintenance people, but I still will cut you that. Uh, give an example. I've had a tenant, just one example, who, at least since nineteen ninety-seven, he paid four hundred dollars for one rent, for a single bedroom apartment. And he's a good man. He tells, takes care of the property. He'll tell me if the lights out, he'll tell me if the, uh, the smoke alarm is, needs a battery. He took very good. Um, I recently raised a rent, seventy-five dollars. And he told me a letter and said, do this way, this is tight. And I'm like, oh my God. And we have spoiled some people. So, you know, we, we have maintained ourselves like that. And consequently, we, we have very little turnover, very little turnover. So I'm, I'm thinking nine hundred to a thousand, with each unit will have its own, uh, central air and heat in there. So they'll be responsible for the, the air and heat. I actually have, I don't want to say it, uh, past the month, but my wife made up, uh, something for the, uh, third floor. You can pass the dominion, I guess. Yeah. Um, this isn't the total amount, but we, our architect's on vacation. So, so we kind of did this ourselves. Uh, this would be a unit right here.
And how many square feet is that?
And this would be, so one, two, three, four. And this is in the line beam explaining where she operate two nights a week for, uh, for two hours.
That's great.
It, it'll be plenty of room. There's going to be storage on the side for these. And then this will be two more apartments, which will split in half. And there'll be storage in the office space up there. I'd be more than happy to give you guys a tour, uh, up there at some point in time. You can see how elaborate it is and how spaced it is.
What is the square footage of each apartment?
The, the, uh, we estimate anywhere from five fifty to, this, this one down here will be close to seven hundred square.
Wow. It may be hard for Mr. Boyle to see on the Zoom call, but if we could get like a printout or just like a sketch and then we can share that later, that would be great. Uh, would you want to pause? Mr. Boyle, see if you have any questions?
Hi, John. No. It sounds like a fabulous idea. And everything the Ali family has always done has always been a credit to the community. No questions asked. I think we all agree on that. Just one thing I would point out to Mr. Ali, perhaps he is not aware of, is that when you combine residential property over business property, you end up with a problem with the water district. Because I'm guessing right now you're on a water beat. And when you can put residential in there, then they take your whole property and make you pay on an individual unit basis, including the six apartments. And he caught each business in there as a separate unit. And you have to pay the freight or the fee as current for a resident, a, a single residential unit, which is, I don't know, two or three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars. It's something you might want to look into because I know people that have it, who, like myself, and, uh, and other people in town, Dalton Garage, for instance. We, we always talked about that, that they have to pay individual rates because they had a residential unit in you. But it's something worth checking into Mr. Ali in case you have already. Because it could be a considerable cost.
Good, good insights, Mr. Boyle. And, uh, thank you for sharing those. And the only comment I had is that you comment about, um, helping with, um, whether it be town employees or nurses or doctors coming to Berkshire County. It's a big issue, right, to find that affordable housing for those, those newer entries into labor force or labor markets. That's a generous position. I believe I would absolutely support that.
That's the way we're going. We are definitely going that way. I mean, there, there are, even we need people, everyone needs people.
Sure.
Uh, good people. And, uh, if we can contribute to it, we will.
Excellent. We, we have a motion in a second to support the, um, the, the grant application, the program. Um, if there's no further discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, here none, motion carries. And thank you so much. And, um, as soon as we have that letter ready, uh, this, I'll be happy to sign on behalf of the board. And then we'll get that to the lawn. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It'd be great to see a salon come to, uh, come to Dalton as well, you know? So that's going to be a nice little business there.
I can't wait.
Uh, fantastic. All right. Uh, number ten, the request for permit fee waiver for the demolition and building permits for the Habitat for Humanity project.
Uh, this is about the Lemonville Road. And, uh, they have requested just the town with the demolition and building permits. The demolition permit is fifty dollars, uh, flat fee. And the building permit is five dollars on a thousand of building values. So for a hundred thousand dollar house, that would be five hundred dollars. For a two hundred thousand dollar house, that would be a thousand dollars. So that's what we're, uh, that's, that's the range that we're talking about. Um, I will note that, uh, the building inspector is not paid through building fees. Uh, so this would not be taking money out of his pocket. Uh, so, uh, that's, uh, the financial status of what they're asking.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we waive the permit fees for the demolition and building permits for the Habitat of Humanity House on Gulf Road.
So second, motion, second, any discussion? Here none, all in.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Boyle.
Yeah, if I might just say one thing. I forget the exact detail, but we were asked to do this month before the past. And there was a reason we couldn't do it. Maybe Bob remembers, but.
I'll remember, John, sorry.
You saying we couldn't waive these fees previously, John?
I think, I think it had something to do, John, with the lot, because the lot wasn't, the lot wasn't laid out or wasn't surveyed or something.
No.
I don't remember other than that.
Yeah. Well, a lot of, I'm in favor of it.
Tom, do you know what?
I can't, I can't remember. It was something, somebody asked, requested that we waive certain fees. And for some reason, we couldn't. I don't know if it was by law or, uh, so forth and so on. I, I just can't remember what it was. But I remember that incident. Had to think about it for a while.
I know that we, we can't give money to a nonprofit. We can't give money to a private organization, but, um, I.
Maybe the building inspector would know or.
Yeah, I, I.
Their town attorney, uh, before, yeah, we could vote on it in favor, in favor of it, uh, based on it's, uh, it's legal for us to do it and the way it feeds.
Yeah, that, that, that's fine. I, I think it might be a reference to the anti-aid amendment, which is not, not giving money. The, and, and this isn't, uh, I don't know if this would be considered giving money, which is not charging. So that, that may be, uh, a significant difference.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Mr. Boyle, did you want to amend that motion to request a legal review or?
No, no, I'm in favor of it, but perhaps time to just double check for.
Yep. Right.
Double check with the building inspector. If he's any prior, maybe he can remember what prior incident prompted that.
Okay.
But he, he's all, he's been here a couple of years, okay?
Okay.
Hey, is he fine with the building inspector? We should be fine with it, I guess.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions, here none, motion carries. Uh, number eleven, approved renewal of intermunicipal agreements with Hensdale and Windsor for dispatch services. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I am pleased to bring you two agreements. Um, one of which has been signed by the select board of Hensdale, one of which has been signed by the select board of Windsor. These are continuations of the former agreement, um, with, uh, no substantive changes. I will say that we are allowed to have a twenty-five-year agreement. So this is written as a twenty-five-year agreement. Unfortunately, the former agreement was written in nineteen ninety-five, so it has technically been expired for a couple of years now. Um, in order to get the grant, uh, that this was reviewed and caught this year as being an expired agreement. So I would ask that you, uh, re-sign the agreement with both towns for dispatch services, uh, so that we can continue to apply for.
so that we can continue to apply for the grant and successfully provide the grant.
Is 25-year agreements the standard? It's just the itchiness I have in long-term agreements.
I wonder if that's tied to also the big grant that we get every year for $250,000. Sure it is. For the, for the, how do I say, mutual aid. You know, the grant that we get to fund it in the budget, and then we wait to be reimbursed with the grants. I wonder if they look for, they want some kind of long-term agreement as opposed to three years, and then they pull out, or somebody doesn't sign on, and then they've got this, I think it's dispatch that they've been funding from the state.
Mr. Diver, if you look at Section 4, effective date and term, 4B and C, I think it'll address your concerns.
Year-to-year, or term limits, it's a term...
Can be terminated. I mean, I'm not saying that it would, but...
Yeah, it is ours or something.
Yeah. It's automatically renewed for a year-to-year term, not to exceed 25 years. Unless the member town provides a town adult with notice. Agreement may be terminated by either party. Good notice.
And, Mr. Richardson, we've had legal review on this as well? I assume not much has changed since the last time, but have we had legal review?
We did not have legal review. This is, again, exactly the wording that we used before. I was, I'm sorry, I was assuming that it had passed previous review. Still be valid.
No, probably, most early would be, to your point. Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the agreement for Dalton Regional Communications Service between the towns of Dalton and Hensdale, and I do believe it's Windsor.
Okay.
Motion second, any further discussion?
I'll just note further that, that section there, just so you know, would require a breach contract for us to terminate. It wouldn't be that we could do it at will.
Yeah.
So, just so you know.
Motion second, any further discussion? Here and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Boyle, just clarification, you were yes on that?
Yes.
And that would be a motion for both towns agreements?
Yeah, because the agreements are the same, correct?
Yes.
Great. Number 12, the National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation.
This is a request from the police department. You've got the proclamation itself in your packets. And it requests that the week of May 11th, May 17th, be declared National Police Week. And also, on May 15th, as peace officers, Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who died in service.
Is there a motion?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? I think it's important that we just post this on our website so people can read the proclamation. And, you know, it's important, especially for our colleagues who serves, and all of our police officers in Dalton, and across the state and across the country, the great work that they do. So it's very important time, very important time, just observation. With any further discussions or comments? Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Here and none? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the BRTA proposed bus stops. Mr. Richardson.
Yes, we have received notice that the Berkshire Regional Transit Authority has, its advisory board has approved some changes to bus services within Dalton. Those, you've got a copy of those maps. What it looks like is that for inbound, they are taking out the North Street loop. And for the outbound, they're adding the Park Avenue loop. So that there will be less service from North Street, but more service by the senior center, among other, or close to this, this senior center. So it looks as though we're slated to lose some service in one direction, but gain some service in the other direction. So this is actually a fairly substantial change that's being proposed for anyone who might be depending on that. There will be signs through, in town, and you may have seen them, actually, for proposed changes. So this is one step in letting the public know that these bus route changes are proposed. And if anyone has any questions about them, to give feedback to the Berkshire Regional Transit Authority. And, again, it's a, it's a combination of both taking some stops away and adding some stops. So it may be, you know, net the same amount of service. I think they may feel that they'll get more service with the, keeping the inbound and outbound routes the same, which is what I get from what they're proposing.
They must have some rider stats that they're using, because the, um, the current inbound and the proposed inbound, there's a significant cutoff there that goes up to,
Yeah.
you know, Hill, and Little Beverly, and then all the Florence and back down eastbound. So they must have some rider statistics that cuss that off, and then extends it down that line, so... I saw signs somewhere they have proposed spots, but I didn't see signs where they have proposed removal, that they're going to remove spots. Maybe I didn't look close enough, but I'll take another ride for town.
They are removing that loop up Pleasant Street and down North Street for the inbound.
But the residents will have a voice in that with the BRTA. This isn't a select board decision. This is us just informing.
But this is to see if there's a great uprising because of the proposed change.
Mr. Boyle.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As your, the town represents to the BRTA, what has happened here is the BRT, one, doesn't have as much funding as it used to. And two, it's been unable to attract qualified drivers for a lot of its routes. Has a consolidation, and Dalton's getting basically just a little trimming. Their, some of the routes are only going to run every two hours as opposed to one hour at every stop. And in conjunction with this, they're also contemplating moving the bus stops. Hence the signs around town, proposed bus stop. If you have any comments or input to the BRT, there's information to contact them. Strange as it may seem, in our community, we have some very, very active bus passengers involved in this transportation issue. And if contacted, they already, I arranged for them a personal interview, sit down with Bishop Bob Malanati, the BRTA administrator. And he's talked to people before about movement. And he is going to accommodate, sit down and accommodate these people as best he can. If anybody has any comments, input, feedback to the BRTA, you can address it to the numbers listed here, Mr. Crane or Mr. Malanati. Or you can call me, and I'll make sure you get some type of satisfaction. Dalton's bus route doesn't serve that many, I think it's like 12 or 13 people a day. But it's important to those people, and they're very active. And I think they're mildly upset at these changes, but it's changes throughout the whole county. Some routes have been eliminated completely. I think Dalton's just getting a little nip here, nip and tuck here, and everything's going to be fine. But if anybody hears anything from anybody that wants more information, please have them contact me.
That's a great, thank you, Mr. Boyle. Any other comments? We don't need a vote or motion, that's just informational. All set, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah.
Board of Health update?
If I can just mention before Agnes gets started, she's going to be sharing her screen with something very similar to what you got in your packet. But the numbers are going to be substantially different from just one week later. Which is one of the reasons I'm wearing my mask the other night. So you may want to follow along in the slides in your handout and compare them to the slides she's going to be presenting on screen. And with that, Agnes, please go ahead.
So I have the ability to share right now? Okay. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So last week, I believe you have the figures from last week when I sent it to Tom. And I believe the seven-day was probably 20, and the 14-day was 37. But I'm going to show you, these are updated as of today. So the CDC COVID tracker, I'm not sure if you're aware, it's something that the CDC puts out by county. And it's what we call a dial-up, dial-down, based on the numbers. I believe last week we were medium, this week we are high. And based on that, CDC recommends wearing a mask indoors in public places, stay up to date with COVID vaccines, get tested, and additional precaution may be needed for people at higher risk of severe illness. What, and speaking, you know, discussing this with both Tom and Andy, we highly recommend the Board of Health to advise to follow the CDC recommended guidelines. We're advising, people have a choice. So we just want to put that out there as far as that goes. On the next screen, you can see the seven-day is 47. Last week, it was 20. This week it's 67. Last week, it was 37. The hospitalizations are up too. If I'm not, if I'm correct, I think it was like eight or nine last week. We're up to 18. 17 in BMC, and Fabius Swain has one. And there you can see from the graph, the numbers going up. In addition, you know, moving forward, I'm just sharing you, these numbers haven't changed. I checked them today, and, you know, there was one norovirus from the date of, from April 1st to May 9th. You know, there's one capo-bacterious, you know, Hep C. They were two pivotal, and then one was revoked, meaning that they researched it epidemiologists, and it probably was reported in another month or something, but they revoked it. Emphysema was high last month, 31 cases, and Lyme disease, there was one suspected. I just really, my point is, the message is that, you know, when viewing, there's another website that we view by town in Berkshire County. And out of the 31 towns, Dalton was number 13 as far as the highest.
Agnes, on the hospitalizations, are those is COVID primary diagnosis, or is it secondary to the primary reason for visit?
You know, that would have to be in an investigation of each case. I couldn't speak to that. That would have to be done on the hospital side. Are these numbers I actually pick up off of BMC's website?
Just in the next report, if we could know what that is, because that's a pretty significant number to be concerned about. If it's primary diagnosis, that's COVID's driving the illness. But if it's secondary to, it could be a surgery, and somebody's tested positive pre-surgery, and not primary reason for hospitalization. Because that number tends to cause concern.
Yeah, the number also goes with the, usually coincides with the rate of COVID going up. And I think that that's, you know, a reflection of that, too.
Yeah, seeing the national numbers, the national numbers COVID's going up at the hospitalization, hospital, predicted hospitalization rate is not trending as it would be predicted to.
Yeah, I agree with you. I understand what you're saying. Also, they have like the Berkshire County rate, and that's up right now. For the positivity rate for the last 14 days, it's 6.44. But again, that doesn't include antigen tests, so there's a lot of tests that are not in here. This is just based on PCRs. And basically, my figures are based on PCRs as well. It's not on, and the majority of people, I think you know, people that are, you hear it in the community. I hear it in, I'm getting reports from Crane, I'm getting reports from Sugar Hill, I'm getting reports from the school. I mean, it's not community spread, it's household spread, according to when I spoke with Leslie, the contact ratio of the area. She says, you know, you're seeing kids, parents, yeah. So I just wanted to share that with you, if anybody had any questions or any comments besides the, like you said, the hospitalization rates.
Is there any movement in the school system at all on this yet? Is there a policy that you're aware of?
No, I didn't hear anything on their policy. I haven't heard anything on their policy. I haven't. That was one thing I wanted to follow up on today, but I didn't get a chance based on what was happening.
Yeah, no worries.
Many, many calls, many calls regarding protocols, you know? You know, questioning certain things, what do we need to do? There were several calls, I was dealing with on that today. Besides trying to put this report together for you guys, so...
Any other, any comments?
Just a, I guess a clerical clarification. Hospital COVID-19 positive patients, the slide says as of 3/24/2022.
Oh, yes. That's definitely my era, thank you very much, pointing that out.
Just clarifying that slide is as of 5/9. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. The other thing is too, is the numbers that I'm getting from the BMC impatient and the Swain has been the standard numbers, the resource where I've been going to throughout this reporting to you since I've been here, which is the BMC website. So it's continuing the same source that I've been always using, where they actually post these numbers.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the reason why I asked that question, because recently, within the last couple of months, they changed the way that they calculated those numbers in the state of Massachusetts. Because you could go for an ED visit, you have COVID, you wind up on a COVID positive. So then they were reporting COVID secondary and not COVID primary over the last couple of months for hospitalization purposes. They may not update, I don't know if they updated their website or not with numbers, but not a big deal, but just curiosity.
Yeah, I'll check into it.
Okay.
And report back. The other thing I needed to speak about, besides the COVID numbers, let's stop sharing that right now, is I just want to give an update on the software, the permitting software. Berkshire Alliance has offered a grant to us, the town of Dalton. It's a total of $10,000 grant, in which four other towns in the area have used a committee called Full Circle. grant, in which four other towns in the area have used a committee called Full Circle. And, let's see, there's been, there's several towns in the area. Adams, Beckett, Egmont, Great Barrington, Nubara, Peru, Washington, Windsor, are some of the other towns. And what they, right now, currently, I'm using PowerPoint, Access, Word, Excel for permitting, which is sort of archaic. This is an online permitting system. And for the first year, they will sponsor us with $6,000 towards the update, and then $4,000 is the annual fee, they'll sponsor it for the first year.
And the software's, the software's what again? Sorry.
Full Circle.
Full Circle.
So I asked them a couple of questions about, you know, I saw the system. I mean, there are other systems out there, but that's not what they're sponsoring us on. They'll sponsor us on Full Circle to align us with what their grant and helping us with. The building inspector currently uses Full Circle as well. So this would be something that we would be able to do, online permitting, conversing back and forth online, and actually paying for the permit and issuing it, and somebody actually printing it out, so it expedites the whole process as well.
Tom, do you want to change your view of that?
My concern is using Access Word, PowerPoint, Excel is not reliable. You know, you can lose that database as well, so that's my, so.
You know, I got a lot of comments, but any questions? Sorry, guys.
Did we budget some funds for this software in the budget this year?
This grant would be for the coming year.
Correct.
$6,000 setup and $4,000 annual fee. And Agnes and I did talk about it, and we figured that the time that it could save her would make, or could make up that difference in a typical year.
If I'm looking, if I'm looking at the right program, it's more not a single department, but multi-departmental infrastructure. So is the plan just for...
It can be, as she said, the building inspector's currently using it as well. One thing that we should look at before you get the grant, Agnes, is whether we can just expand the building inspector's license to include you for a smaller fee.
Listen, and this can also handle financials, account payable, general ledger, financial statements. I might be opening up a can of worms without question, but I'm just kinda curious if we have spending on the software.
Well, we do have dedicated software for those functions. And as a matter of fact, just finished switching to one of them, Softpoint, I think, for the treasurer, and if I'm not mistaken. And that's a tremendous job to make that transfer. So I wouldn't look at that for the financial stuff, at least in the short term.
Okay.
The financial software tends to be very specific, and going with companies that have been doing it for a long period of time can be worthwhile. I know towns that have tried to switch to newer platforms where they didn't really understand municipal accounting, for example, that were very problematic. So, but it's definitely worth looking into in the long, for the long term.
The other thing, as far as the timeframe goes, I have, I believe they were looking for me to give them an answer back by June, so that they would know either they're allocating the funds to us in the grant, or they're not. And I would think that I'd probably be, with that probably going on in July, June, July, as far as going forward for a year with them.
And the grant is from who again?
Berkshire Alliance.
Berkshire Alliance, okay.
And I believe it's separate, it's basically, what we're talking about, that they're granting me is the food permit, or they're not granting any other sections, you know, it's strictly the food permit.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification. That's great, that's super. Thank you for that education, that opportunity.
So is everybody in favor of that? I just wanna make sure that, you know, you're aware.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Agnes, I think we need to look into the possibility of just adding it to the, to the full circle.
Or the current license?
That we already have with the building inspector, and see what that would, you know, see if that's possible, and what it would cost, and then compare that to what we'd be getting from the grant.
Okay, okay, thanks, Tom. So we're, I'll look into that, and then thanks for the clarification.
That said, we would not be able to do it this coming year without the grant, because we don't have funding for it. So this is more for just planning purposes for the following year, but...
Actually, I did put $3,000 in my budget, I believe, for software, knowing that I was gonna look forward to doing something. Didn't realize that it was what the cost was involved, or where we were going with it, and then they actually offered this to align us with other, other towns as well.
So I think we're just not sure how much of the $6,000 setup fee would be necessary if we're already running one of their programs on the platform.
Yeah, maybe that grant would be less, but still cover some of the costs to get started with the program, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll check in on that in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Did you, did you follow that, Agnes? What kind of thought process there was? Since we already have...
Yeah. Wait, wait, one second, clarify, I'm gonna check into the grant to see if we can add mine to the pre-existing building inspector and see what the cost is on that.
Yeah, let them know, let them know we already have a license under the building inspector, and that we'd like to get the license for the food permit, and if they would cover that cost, because we may not need the setup cost, because we're already set up with the software in a different department. It might just be, the cost may be less, just add the module, or add the application for the department's health needs in the food permit process. So we may not need the full 10, but we may only need six or five or, you know, four of the grant, maybe.
Yeah, and that I should really leave up to them, because isn't it a matter of us accepting the grant either way?
Yeah.
And then what the cost is, would be for them to, for them to really look into that, to see if they can tag onto the building inspectors, so that the setup cost would be less.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll go back to Berkshire Alliance then, and tell them that we're interested in it, but maybe if they should really look into, see if they could just tag us onto the building, the pre-existing building inspector's license, and therefore their grant would be less.
Yeah, it might just save them a few dollars, and they can spread their funds elsewhere and still cover our needs, so that'd be great.
Okay, great, that's what I'll do. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, that's great. Any other comments? Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then the other one thing I just wanted to mention was that there was some discussion about, I'm sorry, getting back to COVID-19, you know, as far as doing maybe a rollover call throughout Dalton, just letting them know that the rates are up, and the CDC advisory would be to wear masks indoors.
I'll defer that to emergency management on that, because we're just talking about that phone process in general, and the appropriateness of that would be a question. Because I think people get in there, we don't wanna cause any undue panic.
Okay.
No concern, but, so I'll defer, I guess my more information to the board, I should say, if you guys agree or disagree.
I agree, I don't think we need to use a rollover call, I think everybody's well aware that the case counts off.
Okay.
I think it was just used for the town election as well, right? Or the town beating?
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure, we're gonna defer this to emergency management, and we don't really think that this is something, everybody's aware of it in the public, and they don't really need to?
No, no, the recommendation is for you and Tom to get together and review it with emergency management, or whoever's managing the phone process.
And that's, and actually, that's what the discussion with Dan was, that he was gonna just follow up with Tom. Okay, sounds good, thank you. That's it for me.
Anything else, Agnes, or is that it?
That's it.
That was a great, great update, thank you. Any other questions for Agnes? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Agnes.
You're welcome. Good night.
COVID sick time policy, number 15.
Yes, on a related note, because we're having this new, this new outbreak, I know new employees, let's say up to a year, haven't had time to accrue in sick time. And I would, I'm proposing that new employees, if they get COVID, be allowed a week's extra sick time for, for that, simply because they haven't had a chance to accrue things. We know it's very contagious, we don't want them around, we don't want anyone feeling they have to come into work because they don't have the sick days, so. And it wouldn't be accrued if they, if they, if they didn't have, if they didn't use it. This would be only for COVID illness, and only for employees for under one year, giving them an extra week in case they needed it. I played around with various iterations of this, and a lot of longer-term employees have quite a substantial sick day bank, but the, the, the newer employees have nothing, so they get, they get four days, you know, or five if it's the highway department, though they're now on 40 weeks, too. So it wouldn't affect a lot of people, but it would provide some, some relief in case somebody got COVID and had to stay out.
If you may, if you remember back two years ago, I think we made a decision, I don't remember really following the state or federal stuff, I think we said we were giving people five days for the town. So I don't, I'm not quite sure where, I understand that the state and the federal has expired, but I think as a town, we told everybody we'd give them five days for COVID.
Oh, okay.
I think that was our blanket policy. I don't think we changed it, I don't think anything's been changed on that, I just think that that's what we had agreed upon.
Yeah.
We have to look at the minutes, I agree, I think we did vote on that, but was it in alignment with the timeline of the federal and state?
I don't think it was tied to anything.
It wasn't tied to anything?
I don't think it was tied to anything. I think it was, because I remember having the discussion, where Cutsill had done the same thing, they had just immediately given everybody whatever it was, five days or something like that, but if we go back to the minutes, I believe we gave everybody in the town five days, and I don't think we'd voted to change that since then.
Oh, that's great, and thank you, I, if I was aware of that, it was, when I was so new, I didn't know through, so thank you.
And that was across the board for all employees, all right? So the things that I think we're adding here, which I don't recall if we did or didn't last time, this would not be approved, so it's outside of your vacation of full time.
That's exactly what it was for the last time, it was just strictly COVID time, if you get it, we got to provide.
We get you for five days, we get you covered. We'll just take a motion and recommit to that, so it's easier than digging through the minutes, is that...
Sure, I'll take a motion that we award, grant five sick days for confirmed cases for the Board of COVID for employees through the Board of Health.
Moshe's second discussion?
I would just add that Town Manager recommended just for new employees, but I'm in support of all employees, I don't see, you know, the reason to, I know it's to help these new employees, the, you know, it's a purpose memo, but I think everyone should be able to access the benefit.
Yeah, with this recommit, and it's anybody.
Yeah, good.
Any further discussion? Mr. Boyle, any comments?
Nope, bye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Absentions, hearing none? Thank you, and thank you for that, Mr. Scherbo, you're doing really well, you did that.
Vacation rollover in PEA, Tom Mander?
Yes, I actually don't have the numbers for you tonight, so we'll have to table this. I didn't use all of my vacations.
Sure.
My year is up in early May, so this would be the time when that would be done, but I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers.
That's okay, we'll just defer to the next meeting, and...
Yeah, that would be, I appreciate that.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. Let's see, we just make note of that, and then the next meeting?
We should just donate.
Tom, any other update?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank everyone who turned out for last Monday's town meeting, a long but very productive meeting. I'd like to thank the town for approving the proposed budget and capital projects. I've sent the petition for leaving civil service to our legislative delegation, and Town Council's provided further advice on incorporating the approved amendment into the ABU bylaw, so we should be good to go with that. Last week, Governor Baker filed House Bill 4720, an act investing in future opportunities for resiliency workforce of revitalized downtowns forward. The legislation includes $2.3 billion in funding from the Federal Rescue, from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and over $1.256 billion in capital bond authorizations to strengthen state infrastructure, create jobs, and invest in municipalities across the Commonwealth. Of course, the proposal has to make it through the House and Senate, but under the governor's plan, based on share of population, Dalton's share would be $250,000. I've asked the town planner to propose options for investment. There's a lot of planning-related issues in there, and probably grants coming through. We have received a summons to appear at small claims court regarding a complaint from someone who hit a pothole on Route 9 and blew out a tire. Of course, it is a state road, so I am prepared to represent the town in this proceeding. I plan to contact the Mass Department of Agroresources regarding putting the burden land up for auction. Perhaps their position has changed since they opposed selling the land in the past based on a portion of the APR being in Windsor. If their objection is based in law, there is a disconnect that may need a legislative fix. If it is policy, the ball will be in their court. And that is my update.
Great, any questions for Tom Mander?
What's the claim for damages? The poth tire?
Yeah.
Just curious.
Since it's not a town road, I expect it to be a quick proceeding.
Future agenda items?
Another couple.
Good.
I'd like to know if we can get an update on where the study for the police agreement, where we have the grant for the police agreement with trying to get to Hinsdale and Dalton merged, some kind of timeline of that's gonna get going?
Sure.
Anyone else for a future agenda? Mr. Boyle?
Oh!
One thing that, yeah, speaking about the police merger, also maybe just an update on town hall construction and the move, and things of that nature.
Sure.
And I could put an extra one on the one app, or does it...
Pat, is actually, I just don't hope to come to the next one.
Is he? Okay, all right, great, okay, he's better. One thing I was thinking about over the last few days is the ARPA funds and the balance, right? So what we have is a list of projects we've already agreed to, we have a balance of money to then address all the needs in town, but it'd be great if we could have just a conversation around how do we make those choices with the remaining balance, because I think it's gonna be, there's opportunity and challenges, and what I don't wanna do is find that there's something that we missed, you know, two or three years down the road, that then we have to go back to town and ask for capital dollars when we have these ARPA funds in front of us. And, and just kinda understand as a collective group, how do we, how do we focus on that? Maybe do we get requests in from grant simulators? Maybe do we get requests in from grant submitters, if you will, or things of that nature? You know, just kind of watch and, and go over it. But that's just a suggestion. Anybody disagree with having a conversation, something on top of my mind there? Mr. Boyle? You good?
Now that, but I did think of something else. About an update on what's going on with Gulf Road, the Beavers, the city of Pittsfield, et cetera, et cetera.
We had that from Bud Hall, Bud Hall, two months ago, I think, or maybe three, that the Beavers are back, and it's closed until further notice, until the Beavers are gone again, and Pittsfield are going and do their thing. So Pittsfield didn't take action quick enough when the Beavers came back, so they're, the Beavers are now doing their thing, so it'll close until further notice on that. Scoot them along.
Hey, good.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it. Any other future agenda items? Anything that starts from there you want to put on a future agenda? No, okay, great. Any items not anticipated 48 hours before the meeting? Clear or none? Any remarks with select the word? Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I'd like to give a big shout out to the Dalton softball program. They had a great for the girls there on Saturday. I was stunned at how many girls are playing softball. But I was really very happy to see they honored Chief Strout with a plaque, and she got to throw out the ceremony first pitch for being such a dedicated volunteer all the years, all the stuff she did for coaching and stuff for the girls' softball. I didn't, I didn't understand it was so popular, but I'm pleasantly shocked and happy, so.
That's great, thank you. And I had the pleasure of attending the craft fair at the Wacona High School on Saturday, which was, the creativity around those tables was impressive, and just seeing the high school use that kind of function, and it was run by the student council, and those young kids did a great job putting their program together, and everybody participating in that, and the creativity was amazing throughout the craft fair. Any other comments? Go Bruins, go Celtics, right?
Yeah.
Okay, for announcements, the task collector assessors, health agent, and building inspector have moved from town hall across the street to the old Berkshire Bank Building at 488 Main Street. You can continue to use the drop boxes located outside of town hall for any payments, or you can stop over to their new location. The spring 2022 household hazards waste day will take place on Saturday, May 14, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Lee Wastewater Treatment Plant. Pre-registration for this event is required. Please visit the Dalton Town website for more details. With the upcoming town operation of the transfer station, residents will still be able to use their old bags, and will be able to buy cart permits and bag stickers both by check at the transfer station and on the town's website. I assume the town website's online payment, it's not charged. The Dalton Open Space Recreation Committee will be holding their third annual client cleanup day on Saturday, May 14, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They are looking for community volunteers to help with trash pickup and invasive pulling. More information can be found on their Facebook event page or the town website. The following committees have vacancies and are looking for volunteers, the ADA Committee, the Butefication Commission, Conservation Commission, Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, Dalton Green Committee, Dalton Redevelopment Authority, Finance Committee, Stormwater Management Commission, Waste Management and Recycle Committee. If interested, please reach out to the Tom Andrews office by calling 403-684-6111, extension 202. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, May 23, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. at the senior center, with an option for the June participation. With that, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion, hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Dalton.